Thank you, Mr. Peterson. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the November 5th, 2020 special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission. And I will ask Ms. Martin to please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie? Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. All the commissioners, we've had a chance to review the summary minutes of the October 15th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, I'd ask for motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. You also have the subdivision and the site development plans in the packet. Any questions on those? No questions? Letters of credit and performance bonds? We have four items tonight. Any questions, commissioners? No questions? Then I'd ask for motion.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Runner?
Yes, sir.
I request that you order the record include all statutory and regulatory. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer those witnesses.
So ordered, and you all swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm not aware of any unfinished business or new business before the public hearing. We'll move right into the, so the first item tonight for public hearing is docket number 202012, Flume. The ITA, Susan Wilson and James Devin Butler have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 296.41 acres located at 1188 Mizpah Road, Zero Fred Madison Road, from industrial and institutional government to industrial. Also, those same applicants on docket number 202051Z County, that same tract of land, that 296.41 acres, they have requested to rezone from agriculture to heavy industrial with a general development plan. So we will have the staff now.
Thank you, Chair Runner. And I apologize, I think I've got the wrong view up here. Jessica, can you help me out here, what I need to do?
I think you can still use that same view with the arrows on the top.
Okay, alright, we will work with that then. So, apologize for that. Yeah, here is the properties we're looking at this evening. We had a pre-application conference on September 15th for these properties. This evening, the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map for 296.41 acres located here from institutional governmental and industrial to industrial. If that is successful, I'd like to rezone these same properties from agriculture to heavy industrial in order to develop the properties with a mixture of industrial uses. There, you see the zoning, there's the use agricultural, as is a lot of the area with some industrials, some single-family residential, and then you see some commercial and public institutional scattered around there as well. There is the future land use map, which I just mentioned, and I will bring this up that we can reference if we need to. Going to try something a little different this evening with our staff reports, just kind of try to hit on the pertinent information, and then if you have any questions, obviously speak up and we'll address those. But I will address the compatibility with surrounding development. The applicants have filed a consent form with the city of Bowling Green to annex the property into the city. And the city of Bowling Green held a first reading of the annexation ordinance at their October 20th meeting, with a second reading anticipated to take place on the 17th of this month. Also note that site characteristic review indicates there are adequate facilities and infrastructure, with an exception noted regarding road width. Portions of the development contain mature trees, and there are also known sinkholes and wetlands located within the area of the proposed development. If you're following along in your staff report, you'll see on page two there, the future land use map information, as well as the procedures for amending the future land use map. I'll go ahead and just read what the applicant submitted as their narrative for amending the future land use map. "Expansion of the Kentucky Trimodal Transpark will constitute a major public facility that will serve as a location for new industry. These new industries will serve as a major source of employment and economic development for Bowling Green and Warren County. The original transpark is nearly full. Additional industrial property is needed to ensure the community will continue to attract new industries that will provide jobs for citizens of Bowling Green and Warren County. The land in question sits on the border between land that is designated on the flume as either industrial or governmental. The flume for parcel 072A-02 and parcel 061A-69 is part industrial and part governmental. The proposed amendment to the flume would make all three parcels of land industrial. In essence, the proposed amendment expands the current industrial use into the space proposed for future governmental services. To date, there have been no governmental services located in this area. On the other hand, the existing transpark, which is situated to the west of the land in question, has seen the continued addition of new industries. This additional land was acquired by the ITA for the purpose of expanding the transpark. Accordingly, the proposed use would be consistent with land use in the adjacent transpark. As the landowner, the ITA would ensure that existing infrastructure is in place to accommodate and attract new industry to our community." I'm going to go on to page three, where we have the site characteristics review. I'm going to note three things under that review. One, you'll see there that we don't always have, but there's utility placement noted there. "The binding elements and development plan conditions for the existing properties in the transpark require that all new utility lines, as permitted by the utility company, be placed underground. This same commitment was included in the original set of DPCs submitted by the applicants for this application, but was removed in the final set of DPCs that was submitted to staff. Therefore, this addition to the transpark would be allowed to have overhead utilities, whereas the existing properties in the transpark have underground utilities when permitted by the utility agency or agencies." Natural features, I already kind of touched on that just a second ago, about the sinkholes, the wetlands, the development, or the portions of mature trees. The applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing trees or vegetation located within the proposed development. And finally, cultural or historical resources. The current residence located at 1188 Mizpah Road, known as the Garnet Bryant House, was built in the 1840s and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants plan to demolish the residence to accommodate future industrial development. I will note just one thing under site design and compatibility review, our next section there, going on to page four. "Landscaping and screening. Landscaping will adhere to the standards set forth in zoning ordinance for vehicle use areas and between incompatible land uses. Additionally, a minimum of 10% interior vehicle use area landscaping shall be provided in planting islands or peninsulas, which is 5% more than required by the zoning ordinance. The binding elements and development plan conditions for the existing properties in the transpark require 20% interior VUA landscaping." I'll just note down there, under the traffic impact study, that a study was not required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in lieu of the applicants agreeing to install a westbound right turn lane and an eastbound left turn lane if vehicular access to the development is provided via Fred Madison Road. The applicants agreed to this requirement in development plan condition number seven. Now for the conditions. Some of these I will summarize, since these are generally the same as what's already approved for the transpark, but some of them I will go ahead and read. So, number one, that deals with stormwater and cars considerations, which is the, comes from the same study that was used for the rest of the transpark. Number two, prohibits, deals with hazardous uses. Number three, talks about screening. Number four, addresses signage. Number five, deals with emissions. Number six, I'll read that one. "The property as a whole, not individual building lots, shall contain at least 20% green space, open space, bike trails, or walking paths. All development shall provide a minimum of 10% interior vehicle use area landscaping in planting islands or peninsulas. Paved parking areas shall be set back at least 15 feet from any property lot." Number seven deals with access. Number eight lists prohibited uses. Number nine states that there be a setback from residential use. Number 10 deals with environmental considerations. Number 11 refers to a geotechnical analysis done for the area. And number 12 states, "Any residential use on the property will be limited to the term of the current life estate on Lot 1 of Parcel 1." What that means is, the industrial zone does not allow single-family residential, or residential uses, but there is currently someone living on one of the properties. This just means that that person could stay there until that is no longer needed, but with the life estate. So that would just allow them to stay there, since that's not generally, not allowed in heavy industrial. So we'll go on to page six of your staff report, where there's the Focus 2030 category review. Staff evaluated 14 items. Six of those comply. Four of them are left up to your determination, and four of them do not comply. LU111 and LU112, the proposal may comply with the flume and those categories if deemed compatible with the surrounding area, and the flume amendment to industrial is approved. You all should determine if the development is compatible with the surrounding area and complies with LU113. The proposal may comply with LU2 if you all deem the proposal to be a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal does not comply with LU214 or NCR116, as the applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing trees or vegetation located within the development. And the proposal does not comply with NCR25 and NCR253. Once the current resident no longer occupies the structure, the existing historic home is proposed to be demolished to accommodate future industrial development. Staff suggested incorporating an additional development plan condition to donate any salvageable materials from the existing home to the Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar organization prior to demolition. The applicants provided an email stating that they believe the current resident's family, or the heirs, will obtain salvageable materials prior to demolition, but there is no requirement in the development plan conditions that anything within the existing residence be salvaged and/or donated prior to demolition. With that, I will go back to page one and just look over our points to consider. "The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets the criteria outlined in LU114 of the comprehensive plan. If the flume amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the flume and industrial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding utility placement, the existing historic home, preservation of existing trees, and interior landscaping requirements for vehicle use areas. The proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, and compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by this body." That is all I have for the staff report. I know we did that a little bit differently this time, but if you all have any questions, Ben or I want, I'm happy to answer them. But that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we begin?
Yes, ma'am. Miss Runner? On the utility placement, I'd like the applicants to answer why the, why not all the utilities would be underground.
This is Meredith Rosansky, I'm with the Intermodal Transportation Authority. Gas, sewer, electric, water, obviously would all be underground. With the power, we did leave flexibility. This expansion of the transpark and the infrastructure needed to be put in, like the existing transpark, is going to be funded through a bond issue of the city and the county.
Meredith, I apologize for interrupting you. This is Hamp Moore. We've forgotten to get your name, address, and place you under oath. Do you mind letting me interrupt you and let the chairman do that, and then we'll let you go back to your statement.
If you'd state your name and address, of course. This is Velma Runner.
Meredith Rosansky, 710 College Street.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As I was stating, the bond issue will be covered by the city and the county, and so we will be subject to, you know, what we can afford within the limits of that bond issue. So we did want to be able to provide flexibility that we can fully serve it with power if needed in spots to go overhead. But doesn't all of the other land around that all have underground utilities? No, actually, the property just to the east of that, or just to the west of that is overhead. So what, from the connector road west is currently overhead. What, or from the connector road east is currently overhead. From the connector road west is underground.
So, so my question is, as the transpark has continued to grow, there are overhead lines in parts of the transpark?
Yes, there are currently overhead lines in parts of the transpark.
Okay.
That are on the same side of the connector road as the substation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes, Rachel, I have a question. During the conversations with the unnatural features, in the case that are also known as sinkholes in the area of the proposed development, did the applicant indicate in any way strategies or plans to address issues that may occur to the most persons that are existing in the transpark?
Commissioner Starks, I apologize. I couldn't hear you real clearly, you cut out a little bit, but were you asking if the applicants ever addressed the natural features like the sinkholes and so forth?
Yeah, I was asking if during your conversations with the applicant, was anything discussed related to sinkholes and wetlands as far as issues that may relate to those? The name of the community for those? Or is that all covered under the overall, the transpark stuff?
As far as the natural features, during the pre-application meeting and when we give the applicants the pre-application meeting notes, so they can fill out their application and their development plan conditions and use that so they know what to address, that was noted on there. And they just, it was noted as one of the things that they could address if they chose to, and they chose not to do that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Is there any specific reason why they don't want to keep any of the trees and the landscaping that's presently there? They want to take everything out and then bring all new landscaping in? Is that feasible? We're not proposing that we would take it all out. What we're saying is that we, we don't know, you know, given the nature of our business, we don't know what companies are going to come, what size lots they're going to need, what layout they're going to have. What you see before you is a conceptual layout. Those lot lines may be completely different when the, as we land companies. The existing transpark today doesn't look anything like the original master plan, the lot sizes, because if somebody comes and says they need 10 acres, we have that. If they need 100 acres, we have that. And so not knowing ahead of time what companies and what sizes, we can't commit that, you know, there's going to, we'll be able to keep them. So you're proposing to not put anything in there about keeping any of it and take it all out and start all new landscaping? There's actually very, there's actually very little vegetation and trees out there. I mean, if you look at the site, it's currently agricultural and they're farming all of that. I mean, there are very few trees and they're centered around the sinkhole.
Any other questions, commissioners, before we hear from the applicant? Okay, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant. If there's anything they needed to add.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Gaines Penn. I'm an attorney at English Lucas Priest at Housley, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc., which we've been referring to tonight as the ITA. And I'd like to continue to use that because saying the other will wear my voice out. So if it's with your permission, I'd like to ask one question of Ms. Ramsey before I ask Ms. Rosansky some further questions.
Yes, sir, please.
Ms. Ramsey, based on the review of the staff report, is it fair to say that the proposed amendment to the future land use map will not result in development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure such as roads and water, sewer, and stormwater?
The only note that staff had was referred specifically to the road width of Mizpah Road and Fred Madison Road being 16 and 13 feet wide, respectively. Other than that, we had noted that there was, or that there were adequate facilities and infrastructure.
Thank you. And I believe the proposed plan on Exhibit B calls for initial access to this development to be through the extension of the prosperity way, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is an adequate road? Ramsey?
Yes, and in referring to the, there was coordination with Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as evidence of the development plan conditions.
Thank you, those are all my questions. May I call Ms. Rosansky back? Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rosansky, could you please just give us, for background purposes, just an update on the existing transpark and why it is necessary to, for this expansion? Can, for example, can you tell us how many companies are already located in the existing transpark?
Sure, in the current transpark, we have 18 companies. One office, three education, and four industrial. And there are currently four additional industrial clients under construction. Existing jobs within the park is 2,586. And once the four that are under construction are up and running, that will add an additional 300 jobs.
Okay. And how much available space is there in the existing transpark for new industries to locate?
In transpark proper itself, we have about 200 acres, but they are, but it's broken up into much smaller tracts.
Are you on, yeah?
Can you explain to the commission what the plans are for this land? I mean, what is the development plan?
Yes, and this is planned to be the expansion of the transpark, so we anticipate further industrial growth. Again, the conceptual drawing gives us an idea of how many we can place and what size, but the actual placement and size of companies would vary, so we could end up with, you know, more companies than that on a smaller footprint, or fewer companies on a larger footprint. That is dictated by the type of projects that we see.
Does the ITA expect this expansion to be a major source of new employment for the residents of Bowling Green and Warren County?
We absolutely do, and we want to continue the success and growth of the existing transpark. We're afforded the opportunity to purchase this additional acreage that is adjacent, which is a great cost savings to the ITA and to the community, because we are near heavy industrial utilities, and so extending those will help us facilitate the future growth.
And is also close in proximity to the interstate as well as rail service?
Absolutely.
Are those two important factors in locating industrial clients to the transpark?
Yes, we are within a day's drive of 60% of the US population, which makes us ideal for manufacturing and transportation distribution logistics companies, which is why we've had the success we've had in the transpark. And with, without access to those two modals, we would not have the success that we've had.
Can you briefly explain to us how this development will assist economic development, or be an economic development asset for our community?
Well, the transpark itself is touted currently by the state as the shining example of the state of what an industrial park should be. Having the opportunity to expand that, keeping with our initial standards, making sure that it really is a showcase and not your typical industrial park, I'm afforded this opportunity to continue to grow in a very smart and careful way as a community.
Thank you. One of the, one of the issues I think that bears consideration by the commission is why was this land chosen for the expansion of the transpark versus a location that's already consistent for industrial development on the future land use map? In other words, why do we need to come here versus going somewhere else?
Well, one, we have a willing seller for this property, and two, the proximity to existing industrial-grade utilities is very important. There are other places within Warren County that are slated to be industrial, but they are not near large-grade utilities. So the infrastructure costs needed to make them industrial-grade would far exceed the cost of this current expansion.
Thank you. Can you explain how the proposed use is clearly compatible with the existing surrounding developments?
And as we've already discussed, the property to the west is the current industrial park. It was, in the future land use map, sort of predicted that we would have an industrial component and a public component. Prior, there was an airport proposed moving towards the west, so we feel that we're continuing to grow in a manner that was consistent with the original plan for the area.
The existing park has what are known as deed restrictions and protective covenants in place already, is that true?
Yes.
And those put additional protections on how the land will be developed and give assurances to the property owners, is that correct?
That is correct.
Have you all taken steps to ensure that this new land will be subject to those same deed restrictions and protective covenants?
Yes, they will be subject to the same.
Can you talk for just a second about how the layout and the design of these, of this proposed land will be similar to the existing transpark?
Yes, as discussed, and you'll see that there's contemplated an expansion of Commonwealth Boulevard, which is the main thoroughfare for the park, but also coming down the new Prosperity Drive that's currently under expansion. It will seamlessly run through the existing park, so it will connect in. And the Fred Madison exit, given how the projects are laid out, may or may not materialize, which is why we put that contingent in the development plan. But they would have access directly to the existing transpark through multiple opportunities, and so we do anticipate keeping that consistent throughout the entire park.
You anticipate the buildings, the style, the size, the design will be similar to what we see in the, in the current transpark?
Yes, we have all the same considerations related to the look of the building and the existing binding elements.
What about the overall use and the excuse me, the density of the development? Do you think that'll be about the same as what we see now?
Yes, per the restrictive covenants, Yes, per the restrictive covenants, we have left the same restrictions as far as the type of entities that can be located in the expansion of the park as it was in the original park. So we expect very similar operations.
What about parking and signage? Do you expect those things to be similar?
Yes.
And has the ITA requested that this property be annexed into the city? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Touch briefly on, I know there's an issue about the, the old house that's located on the property. That's currently occupied by Ms. Harrington. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You, can you give us a little background about how that came to be as part of this plan when we bought the property? And what are the, what are the future plans for the house and that sort of thing?
It, it's my understanding that Ms. Harrington is in her early nineties. She has lived in that home for the majority of her life. And the family wished for her to be able to remain there as long as, for the remainder of her life. And so we granted a life estate for the house and the surrounding area, so there would be a buffer for her as we develop the rest of the property. And we also, in that purchase agreement, made it contingent that the family has first right to anything on the property to be able to come in and remove any structures that they wish to keep, so that we make sure that we honor the family's wishes.
Is that promise to the family, is that the reason they give you some pause in agreeing to do a type of salvage operation to the house?
Yes, because that was our understanding with them is that there was several things related to the home and to the other structures on the property that they wanted to maintain within the family.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, those are my questions of Ms. Rosansky. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? No questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Do we have anyone in the audience who has questions for the, for this applicant?
Are they going to do anything to block those two roadways that are so narrow? So the semis won't try to get on either one of those roads?
They won't have access to Fred Madison unless we were to improve it to city street standards and put in the turn lane that we discussed with Department of Transportation. Otherwise, we won't connect in with that road.
What about Ms. Paw?
Ms. Paw is being vacated. Once Ms., the only reason why it's currently open is for Ms. Harrington. Once she passes, that will, that portion of the road will be vacated. So it will be a connection between Prosperity Drive and Commonwealth only. Thank you.
Do we have anyone in the audience with a question? Do we have any opposition to this request?
May I say something?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm Stephanie Morris.
And your address, please?
Thirteen twenty-one Elizabeth Street.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I do.
And make your statement or ask your question.
I just wanted to make a statement as, I, I don't know if I understand everything going on, but as a member of the Board of the Landmark Association, I'm just really sorry to see a house that was built in eighteen seventy be demolished. I think it's, historic preservation is important and I just want to make that statement. I think it's a, it's really tragic to, to tear down such an old, beautiful building.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a statement or ask a question? Do you have anything that you'd like to add, Mr. Penn?
No, no, Madam Chairman.
If there's nothing else, then I will call for a motion.
Make the motion to approve proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty twelve flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU one one four in the comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented in witnesses' public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Balance?
With sadness, I will agree. Yes, please.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, and now we need to act on the zone change request. I would ask for a question.
Make the motion to approve proposed zoning map amendment, together with, and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty fifty-one ZBG, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item tonight is docket number twenty twenty fifty-three ZBG, Bellevue Properties LLC and CSR BG Investments LLC have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately one point three six eight six acres located at zero, ten thirty-two, ten thirty-eight, ten twenty-eight and ten twenty-four Kenton Street, and ten thirty-three, ten thirty-one, ten twenty-seven and ten twenty-three Greenwood Alley from RM two, which is two-family residential and general business with the general development plan, to planned unit development with the general development plan. So we'll hear our staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on August eighth for the properties you see outlined there in yellow. The applicants would like to rezone those properties that Chair Runner just read the, the addresses for, from general business and RM two, to family residential, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, in order to develop a mix of single-family residential detached and multifamily residential units on the properties to include a maximum of twenty-two units. Now, the property history here, for some of you, this area, this property, or these properties might look familiar. Plus one more lot, one additional. But the portion of this application was, was rezoned in twenty nineteen. Planning Commission's recommendation was upheld by the city, the city commission of Bowling Green. But the city commission's decision was appealed to Warren Circuit Court. An order of dismissal was entered on October twenty-second of this year, contingent upon this PUD application to include a mixture of single and multifamily residential structures and the proposed development plan conditions. Before I continue, Hamp, do you have anything to add to that?
Monica, I think you've done a good job of giving a summary of the procedure up until today. As we proceed through, I'd invite any questions that maybe need more specificity than we've talked about already. But, but I, I think you've, you've covered it nicely. Thank you.
We'll note just on the first page there under the compatibility with surrounding development that there are several mature trees located on the properties. I'll go on to page two. Again, kind of like the last staff report, I won't go through every, every single item, but I did want to point out cultural or historical resources. The home at ten thirty-eight Kenton Street was constructed in eighteen fifty-five. The homes at ten twenty-four, ten twenty-eight and ten thirty-two Kenton were built in nineteen forty-one. The homes at ten twenty-three, ten twenty-seven and ten thirty-one Greenwood Alley were built in nineteen forty-nine. The home located at ten thirty-three Greenwood Alley was built in nineteen fourteen. None of the structures are locally designated historic properties, nor are they listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants are proposing to demolish the structure located at ten thirty-three Greenwood Alley, but the rest of the homes are proposed to remain. I will note on page three, going into the site design and compatibility review, under building materials, the applicants did not specify the type of cementous material that could be utilized in the development plan conditions. Plain-faced block is prohibited for all new structures in the proposed development and development plan condition number five. Under the proposed development plan conditions, split-faced block would be a permitted foundation material for any new residential structure on the property, both single and multifamily. I will go down to development plan conditions. I'm going to go ahead and, and read all eleven of those. Number one, all utility improvements will be underground. Number two, access to Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley will be coordinated with Bowling Green Public Works Department. Number three, the exterior of all single-family houses located on the property shall be constructed of vinyl, brick, ephes, stone masonry or other cementous material. A vinyl exterior for new homes constructed on this property should include at least seventy percent brick, stone masonry or hardy board. Number four, the exterior of all multifamily units located on the property shall be constructed of vinyl, brick, ephes, stone masonry or other cementous material. Number five, plain-faced blocks shall not be allowed on any new structures constructed on the property. Number six, the property will be developed with a community mailbox system and uniformed site lighting. Number seven, lighting on the property will be downlighting not to exceed sixteen feet in height, high-intensity discharge shoebox luminary type or wall-packed lighting, designed to minimize light trespass onto adjacent residential property and shall not exceed half-foot candles at the property line. Number eight, the proposed buildings along Kenton Street will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Kenton Street or shall be screened with one evergreen tree per fifteen feet of side or rear facade facing Kenton Street. Number nine, the proposed buildings along Greenwood Alley will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Greenwood Alley or shall be screened with one evergreen tree per fifteen feet of side or rear facade facing Greenwood Alley. Number ten, in the event a structure is to be demolished, all salvageable material shall be donated to the Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar organization. Number eleven, a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence shall be constructed on the northeastern property line. I will note that commissioners, you should have received a couple of letters of opposition to this application. One item mentioned in there was, mentioned a fence, and this development plan condition is for a fence. Moving on to the Focus twenty thirty category review, there are nineteen items that staff evaluated. This application complies with six of them, may comply with ten and does not comply with three. The first of those, LU one one three, this body should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. The proposal may comply with LU two and LU two one. If the planning commission determines this is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. The applicants have stated that a minimum of thirty percent open space will be provided within the development. The planning commission should consider if this is usable space and if the proposal complies with LU two one one. The proposal does not comply with LU two one four, PR one seven or NCR one one six, as the applicants did not address existing trees located on the property. This body should determine if the proposal will protect nearby neighborhoods and complies with LU two five. LU two five two and HN one two, the planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. LU two five three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is an opportunity for revitalization and redevelopment. And HN one, HN one three, planning commission should determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. I will go back to page one where we have some points to consider, that the proposal is consistent with the flume mixed-use residential category. The proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding tree preservation. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design with points to consider regarding building materials and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And if this application is approved, the order of dismissal entered by the Warren Circuit Court will be satisfied and the property will be developed with a mixture of single and multifamily residential uses in accordance with the approved PUD. Otherwise, the dismissal, the dismissal will be set aside and the appeal shall continue as provided by KRS Chapter one hundred. That is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure as far as the, any legal questions, Hamp can help you with that. And then I believe the, the applicants are here and I think we have some, some folks with us who would also like to speak.
Monica, if I may just add, there was also one email sent to you that was in support of the project as well, so just wanted to, okay?
Yes, yes. There were two supporting emails.
Saying there's two, so.
Yeah. We don't always get support emails, so I forgot about those. But yeah, there, there were two in support, which you all should have also received.
Any questions for Ms. Ramsey, commissioners, before we hear from the applicant?
Madam Chair, this is Tim Graham. I do have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ramsey, do I understand that all of the structures, with the exception of one, all of the existing structures will, will remain?
That is correct. The ten thirty-three Greenwood Alley is the only one proposed to be demolished of the existing homes.
Is someone currently living in that home?
I'm not sure about that. That might be a better question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
On the parking standards that are shown in their narrative, there's only one parking space for each residential unit? Don't, most couples have two vehicles?
Commissioner Clark, I, I'm not sure of their, their reasoning for their, their parking. Perhaps that'd be a better question for the applicant?
Monica, it does, but Monica, it does meet the parking standard, correct?
With a, with a PUD.
Okay.
Ben, do you have something you want to chime in with?
Yeah, PUD, you can, they can set their own parking standard. But in this area of the city of Bowling Green, the minimum standard is one space per unit and then add ten percent for configured for gas. So the parking requirement in this area is lower than, than other parts of, parts of Bowling Green. However, this is a PUD, so they can't set their own parking standard.
Excuse me, okay. And Ben, could you expand on that just for a moment? Is the assumption that some of these occupants will use public transportation? Why is it lower here?
Yeah, typically, I guess, one of the trends in planning is to not have more parking and less asphalt in, in, especially in, I guess, the old central business districts to encourage walking, biking amenities, those types of things, but also use of public transit and public transit is very near in this area. So we made that amendment, it's probably been two, three years ago now, to, in the, that inner ring. If you think of downtown bypasses as making a ring, so inside that ring, that bottom half would be to lessen that, lessen that parking standard. Except, it's near west.
Where would the carryover parking go then? If there's only one per unit and there's two vehicles for the family, where would the carryover parking go? I guess I'm confused.
Again, for this specific development, that's probably the better question for the applicant. But in general, ideally, they don't, they would not be using as many cars and it would be less, less parking.
Any other questions before I call for the applicant?
Yes, Chair Runner. Ms. Ramsey, on item eleven, under development plan conditions, indicates a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence constructed on the northeast property line. Does that mean that fence will run the entire length of that property line?
Commissioner Starks, that, that is my. Commissioner Stark, that is my understanding. The applicants may be able to expand on that a little bit, but, but that is my, that is what I understand that conditions mean. Yes, the same as you.
Other questions? Then we'll, we'll hear from the applicant, please.
Okay, my name is Desmond Bell. You need my address?
Yes, sir, we'll swear you in. If you give us your name and address, or your name, Mr. Bell.
Desmond Bell, 2865 Laurel Stone Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I would also like to give permission to Keisha Townsend Eaton to speak on my behalf, not his legal representation.
Yes, sir, we can swear her in, then. If you want to make a statement first, or have her speak for you?
Well, I can answer the fence question. It will go the whole line of, the whole property line.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Bell, this is Hamp Moore. I'm an attorney for the commission. On the topic of the fence, you've indicated your agreement that it'll run the entire northeast line from Kenton Street to Greenwood Alley. And I think also, there's been an agreement that the fence will not have any gates built into it. And just for purposes of explanation, I think that is to make sure that the parking located on the properties that front on Tenth Avenue, that that parking would not be used by the residents for parking, for folks who live in the residence. So it is your agreement that binding, I'm sorry, development plan condition 11 also include the fact that the fence would not have any gates constructed in it? Am I correct about that?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell, I've got a question for you. On the general development plan conditions, looking at three and four, on four, would you be willing to match what you have on three and say that the multifamily units on the property shall be constructed of brick, takeout vine, at least seventy percent of brick, stone masonry, or hardy board?
All the houses, we're looking to doing hardy board.
I'm talking about the multifamily.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Will you be willing to say at least seventy percent of that will be non-vinyl?
Yes, it will all be hardy board.
It'll all be hardy board?
Yes, sir.
So we're okay to say a hundred percent hardy board?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mr. Bell, when you say a hundred percent hardy board, that pertains then to all of the structures, both single-family and multifamily?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you.
Mr. Bell, did you hear our concerns about parking? And where do you anticipate the second car in the household and any guests that come? Where do you anticipate them parking?
I'm gonna let Jase Caldwell answer that question. He's the surveyor for the project.
Okay.
You want to swear me in, Velma?
Yes, I sure do. Give us your name and address.
Jase Caldwell, 1015 Shid Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We did provide more parking than the design standards showed. We actually have two spaces for every unit. And we would probably be willing to add on there that we'd also have ten percent for guests. So one space for every unit, plus ten percent for guests. We were just trying to keep with the, that area right there with the one space per unit. But I did leave out there for the guest, so we can change that, if Mr. Bell is okay with that.
So, Jase, this is Hamp Moore. You were referring to your design standards, which are found on page fifteen of the staff report. And under paragraph C for parking standards, is it the proposal of the applicant that it now read, one parking space for each residential dwelling unit, plus an additional ten percent for guests? Is that the, is that the commitment? Jase?
Yeah, that would be my proposal, as long as Desmond's okay with that. We have enough parking for that right now.
And so, Mr. Bell, did you agree to that amendment in the design standards to include an additional ten percent?
Oh, yes, sir, I agree with you.
May I clarify something with that parking? So we're proposing twenty-two total units, is that correct?
Yes.
And we're showing forty-four parking spaces. So what was just committed to would probably, would actually be less than what it showed. Just, am I, am I missing something, Jase, or Desmond, anyone?
No, I was just, our goal in doing this, it's kind of an interesting development. We're trying to help the area. And so I helped, me and Desmond, we wrote these together. And the goal of it was mainly in going to PUD was so that we could preserve the existing single-family houses on there and also add the multifamily. And so in doing that, we had to do the PUD. But ultimately, I'm trying to stick with an RM3 standard that the zoning ordinance already allowed for, with the exact same parking requirements of the RM3. So obviously, Desmond, that was one of his questions to me when I suggested we do it that way, was, you know, where is the second person in the family going to park? And I said, well, we can provide more parking. And he said he wanted at least two spaces for every unit. But I just, I'm trying to match the RM3 standards that you guys have set forth in that area.
Sure, but I just make sure I was clear that that would be less parking than what you currently have shown on your concept plan.
I think, I think what it needs to say in the design standards under C, wouldn't it say two parking spaces for each residential dwelling unit, plus the ten percent?
So I couldn't do that. We don't have that much parking. That'd be, that'd be forty-nine spots. Right?
And how many total spots do you have right now?
Forty-four.
So you just have the, okay, so just two, two spots per dwelling unit?
That would be fine, too.
So paragraph C of the design standards would then be amended to read, two parking spaces for each residential dwelling unit, period? Is that what you're proposing, Jase? And then I'll ask Mr. Bell if he agrees.
Yes, sir, I think that would be appropriate.
And Mr. Bell, is that your commitment also?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Tim Graham here. We have received a couple of letters. I won't say they're opposition letters. They're just letters that have laid out some concerns. Is someone going to go through those, or should we address those at this time?
I believe Ms. Kilgore is here. When we get to the opposition or asking questions, you know, we can, we can talk with her and see if she wants to address those. I didn't know if Mr. Bell had, I know he mentioned someone that would make a statement for him. I didn't see if he wanted to go ahead and continue with that, or just keep it a question and answer.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Do you, do you have anything else to say, Mr. Bell?
Uh, no, ma'am. Like I said, you all want to swear in, Keisha, that'll be fine.
That, that'll be fine, then, if, if she is with us.
I am here, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we'll get your name and address, please.
Great, thank you, Chair Runner. My name is Keisha Townsend Eaton. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I interrupted, I apologize.
No, that's okay. My address is 806 Laurel Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead and make your statement.
Thank you, Chair Runner. And I will very briefly address that question on parking to the extent that I can, as someone who has had family there, who has spent a lot of time there, lived there at one point. Historically, and probably likely today, a substantial number of the residents in that area do not have vehicles. And I would assume that that would be the case. That will, that Mr. Bell hopes to have there, as well as being a member of a number of local businesses and public transportation. I would imagine that that would be less of an issue than, than one might think. So I just wanted to start with that. But my name is Keisha Townsend Eaton. I am honored that Mr. Bell has asked me today to be a representative for his application to rehabilitate homes on Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley, as well as build more homes in this neighborhood for families to really build roots and maintain their roots here in Bowling Green. So as a disclaimer, I am an attorney, but I will not be speaking in that capacity tonight, nor do I represent Mr. Bell in that capacity. I am speaking as a community member invested in the growth and integrity of the city and its residents, as well as in the capacity of Economic Development Chair for our local NAACP chapter. I'm honored to also have President Dearbone on the call tonight, as well as a member of our state NAACP, Ms. Arneeta Gadsden. And I think most importantly, I'm speaking as someone who has roots in this neighborhood and as someone whose family has had roots for many, many decades, either as long-term residents or as church members of 11th Street Baptist Church, which is immediately across from the development on Kenton Street. I'm also glad to see a number of familiar faces and names on this call tonight. I do not have the option to raise my hand to show support, but I'm sure that, that others, that others do. And I'm not sure if there's any way to indicate that, but I see a number of people that have shown up in support tonight. I'm also coming to you tonight as a community member who is familiar with our comprehensive plan. When Mr. Bell approached me and introduced himself and told me his plan for this neighborhood, as someone who has such a connection to it, I really couldn't contain my excitement for what this can bring to our community. And when reading this proposal in the context of our city's greater vision on development, I couldn't think of many more developments that would be suitable under the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. The staff report that you have seems to be consistent with its suitability in many respects. And again, this, this development is intended to rehabilitate rather than demolish existing historic homes and to create new homes for families who need them at a time like this. Now, I know a lot has been said about the maintenance of these properties or lack thereof, but I want to make sure that this commission knows that many of these complaints stem from a time before Mr. Bell even got involved, which was only recently. But to my knowledge, in the very short time that he has been involved, he's been the only person to really take care of some of these longstanding issues, such as the lawns and hiring security to watch over the vacant properties while they're pending development. As one neighbor has put it, Mr. Bell has asked for and valued our opinions about his proposal. And he's even asked us to help him place individuals who will be compatible tenants and homeowners. He has come in and done more in a short amount of time than I've ever seen. And indeed, it was said before to this body, not too long ago, I believe it was last year, that there was nothing historic about this area. There was nothing that could be preserved. It would be impossible. And as, as you've seen in this proposal, the vast majority of homes are going to be saved and salvaged, and only one is intended to be demolished. And I will also say to Mr. Bell's credit, unlike a number of developers that may have appeared before this body in the past, he's also made every effort to consult with and work directly with those who might have questions or concerns and remains committed to those efforts, including the one business owner, which I believe was mentioned earlier, who I understand recently relocated to Kenton Street in recent months and is becoming familiar with the area. But in short, I think we should want and encourage developers like Mr. Bell in this city. My hope is that many of the concerns, such as fire truck access, would have already been explored and assessed by staff far before the application has gotten, had gotten to this stage in the process. However, I am also glad that Mr. Caldwell is here to answer those questions and additional questions that might be presented in terms of those technical elements. And I'll defer those questions to him and Mr. Bell. I would also like to thank the commission staff for offering their assistance for tonight's hearing. I do have some slides that I'd like to share, so can someone let me know if I'm able to share my screen?
Jessica, there you go.
Okay. Is my screen being shared, or do I need to?
I think we have everyone. Do we have everyone? Jessica, can you?
There you go.
There we go, now we've got you.
Okay, great. So I am just going to share a little bit about the neighborhood. This was a home that was, so this picture was taken, I believe, in 2011, so not too long, not too far away from where we are now. This is my grandmother's home. It was 1036 Kenton Street. It is now zero Kenton Street because it was demolished after she was no longer able to live there independently and ownership was transferred. So as I said earlier, it has been said that there has been, there's not really anything historic about this area. That was the claim that I heard. But I'd like to just tell you that Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley have a rich history in this city. And I think that we're really missing something when we focus on the state of an area, as it has only been for really a small fraction of its existence and not the whole picture. Indeed, it's a substantial number of neighborhoods have seen their ups and downs, and this particular area of the city is no exception. Yet, let's not forget that in the moments that we acknowledge and address our rough edges, we contribute to the greater story of who we are and what values we hold as the community. And I think in the case of Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley, those values are perfectly encapsulated in the following vision statement of the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which falls under quality of life and community character. It states that one of the important indicators of these qualities is as follows. Lifelong residents, as well as new arrivals, will be deeply rooted and actively involved in the community through churches, civic and neighborhood organizations, and volunteer activities. Furthermore, I'd like to highlight its suitability in the context of vision statement on VS9 of the comprehensive, excuse me, the Comprehensive Plan, which states the following. In our long-established urban areas, we will accommodate compact, continuous, high-quality development, redevelopment, and infill within residential, commercial, and employment centers, which can be efficiently served by existing or expanded public facilities and services. Maintain stability and continual reinvestment in older neighborhoods, which this is to ensure historic character is protected and homeownership and neighborhood pride are encouraged. So I'm going to start with the story of 1036, my grandmother's home. I can't, I might have to escape to play it. But this was a prayer that was said in 2013. And in this video, you'll see residents of Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley, I believe, some who are no longer with us and some who were displaced after the initial proposal to transform the neighborhood into contractor garages, and some who have more than fifty years of history on this block, including during the segregation era, where Kenton Street was one of the few neighborhoods in town where African-Americans were able to live. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and play it. And it is, it is not, um, playing for some reason, but it might be something on my computer. See if I can. Hey, there's probably a, a technical issue here, but I will, um, say that we, we all had a, um, a prayer, um, at this, at this, um, right before the house was demolished, and the deacon who was leading the prayer basically said, you know, whatever we build here will be for the glory of God, and let's, let's make sure that, um, it really advances, um, those values in that kingdom. And so it was really meaningful for us to have that, that moment, and I think that, um, my personal belief, um, that the development proposal has at this time in particular, um, is really nothing short of, of providential. So these are a few of the Kenton Street early residents, um, my mother and some of, um, our residents, um, this is back in the segregation era. Um, and this slide here, um, is, um, you know, some notable community members. Here is the Burnham family of Burnham and Asans Funeral Home. So really, the Kenton Street residents have shaped us, our city, um, in every industry, just about. Uh, here are some records, um, from nineteen forty-one of the African-American residents who lived on Kenton Street at various addresses here, and there's several more that go into the fifties and sixties that we were able to get. Um, these slides were also of early Kenton Street residents. Uh, this particular picture was taken in front of Ms. Nettie Milliken Cox's home, um, and I believe she was very well-known for her famous recipe. Um, she was also a published songwriter and baker. And I'll say some of the other names on this street. Milhur Corley Carr was a seamstress storyteller, word of culturalist, um, and she was a midwife as well. Josiel Corley was an expert Tyler in the city. Ronald Alexander was the manager of Forgeries Restaurants and also the former president of the Kentucky Restaurant Association. Family pictures on, um, a home within Kenton Street. More pictures of residents on this street, you know, one of the things that makes this neighborhood really unique, and I've had a chance to live all over the country and even abroad, and I've never seen, um, an area where multi-generations or families tend to stay in that area, um, and develop those roots. Um, me and my grandmother's house as a child. Um, and I will also say that there is a daycare center, um, in this neighborhood that has also been there for, I believe, maybe fifty years or, or longer, so, um, that's also something that will be accessible to the residents, and that's also a place that I grew up in, as well as some of, uh, my relatives and existing, um, residents as well, multi-generational, again. So I will just conclude and say that in addition to many of the sections of the room in the Comprehensive Plan that's listed as consistent or likely consistent in the staff report, um, I'll also draw attention to these additional areas that inform the work of this body. Um, before I do that, I also wanted to touch a little bit on the, on the trees, um, that was brought up by Ms. Ramsey at the beginning of the, um, the hearing, and I am so glad that Mr. Bell is going to, um, be planting new trees. Um, most of the vegetation and the trees, uh, were destroyed with the previous, um, property owner, so there was not much left, but I'm glad that there's, you know, going to be something, um, that will be put there in addition to the materials that are donated to Habitat for Humanity Restore, um, very sustainable. So, um, those areas that I mentioned though are Action HN five point seven, that act is to ensure that, that sufficient land is zoned to meet projected affordable housing needs based on the latest available information and studies. And Action ED six point one, endeavor to maintain a reasonable cost of living in Warren County, including addressing the cost of housing and transportation issues as important economic development issues. Consider the impact of land use, transportation and related decisions on the cost of living. So not only will Mr. Bell's proposal allow for affordable housing, I, I probably didn't emphasize that as much as I, um, should have, that these are, are going to be, um, affordable housing units. Um, not only that, listed, um, they're listed in the highest needs categories as identified by the most recent Bowling Green Housing Needs Assessment, and this is at a time when we're facing unprecedented housing crisis, um, exacerbated by COVID. So not only will the homes be affordable, but they're also going to be within walkable distance to a number of, um, facilities and, and businesses, accessible to public transit, childcare, an affordable urgent care facility, and a number of other establishments, and then of course churches as well. Um, so I would, would like to thank you for your time. If there's any other questions on the technical side, I'll defer those to Mr. Caldwell or Mr. Bell. Um, and appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend, appreciated the, uh, history lesson, and I love the photographs, I always like to look at pictures, so that, that was great. Um, anyone else? Well, Commissioners, do you have any questions before I open it up to the audience?
Chair Runner and Chris.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to, is it possible to go back to item three under development plan conditions? No, Mr. Bell indicated that he was willing to do, um, on the board. Um, and, and correct me if I'm out of order here, but I'm trying to make sure that he understands that the plans, um, the development plan conditions indicate that he can do seven percent. But he doesn't have to do a hundred percent hardy board, does he?
That's what he agreed to.
No, I, I know he agreed to it.
He just wanted to make sure that, that he understands that change, is that why you're asking, sir?
Yes.
Yes, I, I'm on here. Um, no, when, when we were talking about Hardy Board, I'm doing, I wanna do all the houses in Hardy Board, and I understand the, the apartments. But if, if you're, if we, if, by a chance that we, you're saying seventy percent, my, my only thing is, are you saying seventy? How, how would you do seventy?
Well, I, no, our development plan conditions, uh, it says a vinyl exterior for new homes construction only property should, should include recent, some history on Hardy Board. And I think when Chris addressed the question, he asked if you, I think you agreed to do a hundred percent, but Chris, can he do seventy percent?
Me and Christian?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Christian, yes.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Stark, absolutely, I'm, I'm fine with seventy percent.
I'm just not wanting Mr. Bell.
I'm, no. I, I, I don't disagree with you, I, I think that's a great point, and I think it's probably, uh, the fair thing to do is, is like we do in most meetings, is why don't we put seventy percent out there, more than likely, you'll end up probably doing most of it anyways, but at least that gives you a little, a little leeway in case you, uh, in case you get into a situation, but it, no, I'm great with seventy percent.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think your project's great.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, let me, uh, let me see if, if the record reflects where we are at this point on those requirements. Um, if I'm looking at Development Plan Condition three and four, uh, it looks to me like number three deals with the exterior treatment of the single-family houses, and, and number four deals with the exterior of the multifamily units. And so, uh, what I hear you say is that the same provision that's set forth in three for the single-family houses would now apply to the multifamily units. Uh, do, do you all feel the same way as I do? And so can we just delete four and, uh, have paragraph three say the exterior of all dwellings located on the property shall be, and then the balance of number three as prepared?
Is it?
I think so, I'm, I'm good with that.
That's fine.
Did you want, did you want vinyl taken out of that earlier you mentioned about vinyl, Christian?
Well, I'm okay, I, you know, I, I'm okay with the vinyl, I, I would just like to see, and I think he's agreed, at least seventy percent being brick, stone masonry or Hardy Board. That's all, that's all I was trying to get, get to. So if, if he wants to leave thirty, yeah, that, that gives him thirty percent leeway if he needs to use some vinyl and, or wants to use some vinyl, I, I'm great with that.
And that's the point I was trying to make, Chris.
I, I agree, Mr. Starks.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. Uh, and so Desmond, um, I don't see you, oh, now, now I see you. Um, so you, you're okay with those modifications that we just outlined?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Do we have, uh, anyone here tonight that's in opposition of this request or has a question?
I'd like to speak in favor, please.
In favor, yes, sir, and you give us your name and address, please.
My name is Steve Porter, I'm an attorney, I'm at twenty-four oh six Tucker Station Road in Louisville, four oh two nine nine.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you.
I will be able to be very brief after that wonderful, uh, Akeisha Townsend presentation. Uh, anything that I might say will, will be nothing by comparison to her presentation and history and concern about the neighborhood and the history of the African-American community there. But just to let you know, I'm the attorney representing, um, Mrs. Anthony Bland, the Eleventh Street Baptist Church, in the lawsuit where we filed a suit against the previous commercial, uh, use of this property, the commis, the commercial zone chair. And I want to thank Hampton Moore, uh, for working diligently with us to get to this point where we could get rid of that commercial use in this neighborhood and go back to a good residential use to preserve, uh, the aspects of this neighborhood. Uh, just a few little things, I think that this plan, uh, has, uh, wonderful features to it. One is the rehabilitation of the older buildings, uh, then the, uh, reconstruction and revitalization by adding more residents. Uh, the parking, just understand, there are forty-four parking spaces for twenty-two units. That is, I believe, above your requirements on your code. Uh, so I think there's plenty of room for the units to park and for, uh, visitors and guests to park, and will eliminate any concern by Ms. Kilgore or any other neighbors that people will park on their property. Uh, plus that fence along the line will prevent any easy access from other parking to this project. So I believe that, uh, that has been taken care of. The, I think Mr. Bell has, is proposing, uh, good construction features, uh, and a good, um, there are points of ingress and egress, there are three points of ingress and egress, two, uh, you know, two on Greenwood and one on Kenton, and, uh, I think this is good for the neighborhood. Uh, and I just think that this is a good project, you know, after my many, many years in planning and zoning work, uh, uh, just, I'll say again, uh, to Akeisha Townsend, there's no way that this old white man from Louisville can duplicate what that young, that young lady said to you about this neighborhood and how this will improve and preserve the neighborhood. So my clients are in full support of this, we're glad to get rid of the commercial possibility and restore this as a residential, uh, piece of property, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to make a statement?
Hey, Vilmann, this is, uh, Carlos Bailey, one thirty-six Kindale Street, Bowling Green, Kentucky, four two one oh three. I'm also the co-
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do, this is gonna be a brief statement, I'm the co-counsel with, uh, Steve Porter, uh, Representative Felicia Bland. Now, I'm in full support of Desmond Bell and Roslyn Bell and their industry, basically, to keep these, these homes historic. That's the main thing that we want to do, but also to make it revitalize that area. So hats off to Mr. Bell for wanting to come in to do those type of things. So it's just a statement, just, I'm in full support, and I want to thank Hampton Moore as well for getting this resolved.
So, thank you, thank you very much, do we have any other people?
May I speak, please?
Yeah, yes ma'am, Ms. Bland, it's good to see you.
Yes, thank you, um, my name is Felicia Bland, um, I live at ten forty-three Kenton Street. Uh, I do swear to tell the truth, I think that's- Okay, I appreciate everyone's support here, thank you so much, I appreciate the attorneys that have spoken on our behalf. Uh, our hats off to Akeisha Townsend, who's also worked with our attorneys. Um, I want to say this one thing, everyone has been in support of this project, but I also want to speak for our family, myself, my sister Deborah is here. We have lived in this neighborhood for forty-seven years, we moved in this house when I was five years old, so I'm telling my age. It is not a historical neighborhood, we own our home, we do not rent. Fought hard to preserve the house that we now live in all these years. And for Mr. Bell to come in and do something to revitalize this neighborhood, and Mr. Bell has been awesome as far as coming in and walking the neighborhood with us and explaining his plans for our neighborhood, our neighborhood, that we've been here for forty-seven years, and we definitely are in favor of Mr. Bell's proposal, thank you.
Thank you ma'am, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to say ditto?
Yes, this is, uh, this is Arneeta Gadsden with the NAACP, I'm the State Envato Climate Justice Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And my address is sixty-three eleven Bass Road in Prospect, Kentucky. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood that the NAACP, we are, we are in total support of this project. When we're talking about affordable housing, especially here in, uh, in the, uh, COVID challenge that we have here and the health crisis that we have here, when we talk about affordable housing, it is important, and this contractor and developer, when they're talking about improving and enhancing the neighborhood and keeping the culture and characteristic, that's what it's all about, that's what we stand for. Uh, I'm not gonna give a long speech because everybody has already done it, it's been done in, in a beautiful way, and just want to let you know that the merit of this and the future of this development and this, uh, community is so important to us, and we are in total support, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, anyone else?
May I speak?
Yes, yes, sir.
Carl Whitfield, two thirty-three Hill Topper Drive. Swear to tell the truth, yes. I am the pastor of the Eleventh Street Missionary Baptist Church, which is right across the street. I want to say my hats off to Brother Desmond Bell, I support him wholeheartedly because last year my heart was broken. We owned a piece of property that was, that was sold to the previous owner, and at that time we were told that he was gonna make that affordable housing for all. Then he reneged on his, what he was told us to do. Now we have it that we will have affordable housing for people to come and to be able to have a place to grow up. I'm a long-term, I've lived in Bowling Green all my life, I have played on, uh, Kenton Street, in the Eleventh Street area. It's an honor for me to pastor in that area, and so I'm just thankful to God that this young man has come along and self-fit, taking, bring affordable housing back to that neighborhood, and surely it is a attribute to the neighborhood, to churches in that neighborhood that people will have an opportunity to go and fellowship with, and not, a, a, along with all of the other amenities that are there in that area. So I thank God for what's going on tonight, we pray, I want to thank Brother Desmond for having the vision to come in and revitalize and bring that neighborhood back to what it used to be, and that is families growing up and dwelling together, God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak or ask a question? Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is Lana Kilgore, um, my husband is on-
This is Lana Kilgore. My husband is on tonight, Scott Kilgore. We just want to make sure that we do not oppose the revitalization of this neighborhood that we bought into through my professional practice. I have a law practice here at nine fifteen East Tenth. And I swear to tell the truth. But our concerns are the ones we have laid out in the letter to the commissioners. And some of those have been answered this evening, and we certainly heard that. There are some other concerns that we have that I don't think have been addressed yet that perhaps Mr. Bell can speak to, or perhaps Steve Caldwell. I have met Mr. Bell, and I think this is a commendable project. I think it's an exciting project. Definitely, I would love to see these nine houses renovated and enjoyed by new tenants in a residential capacity. The entire time that we've been here, since March of the year, they've been mortared, vacant for reasons you all have spoken to about that litigation. So with that being said, my concern continues to be the parking. And my parking lot comes within about three feet of the corner of ten twenty-four Kenton. And I do appreciate Mr. Bell's agreement to put the six-foot privacy fence with no gates along that border of his property that runs parallel to Tenth Avenue. I would like to know what kind of material that privacy fence would be constructed of. That's one question.
Mr. Caldwell or Mr.-
Perhaps I can answer that. The Development Plan Condition number eleven says that it will be a wooden privacy fence.
Wooden and not vinyl?
It states wooden, so if that's what it says, that's what it would have to be if this were approved.
The, another, another one of the concerns we have is parking. And I just don't see how Mr. Bell, if he's going to continue to own this whole development, is going to rent only to people who have either one car or no car. Because this, this really has only thirty-six interior parking places. Because the other eight that have been spoken about this evening are over there dedicated to the front yard parking of the Greenwood Alley houses. So when we speak of fourteen, excuse me, forty-four parking places, there are only thirty-six in the interior to service these six-plex apartments and all of the houses to be on Kenton. And I just don't think that that's sufficient parking for people who do tend to have two cars, working families perhaps, as well as their guests. If this development has twenty-one units, slated to have twenty-two units, if there are anywhere fifty-six to ninety people living on this one point one 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 four acre parcel, that is an extremely high density, and we should expect multiple cars needing to park in that. So the parking for the residents continues to be a concern of mine as an adjoining property owner, as well as I think it's only reasonable to expect that the people living there are going to have guests that come to this residential area for, you know, visiting whatever other purposes there are. I think the density is just simply too high. We've made suggestions that it be lessened. And that goes hand in hand also with the safety concerns that we have. Right now, I believe one of the attorneys mentioned that this has three access points, and that's really not an accurate statement at all. This development has off-street parking slated for Greenwood Alley, and it has one entrance and one exit off Kenton Street, which is a one-way street that's only at best twenty feet wide, as surveyed for Mr. Bell. I don't think that fire trucks can access the interior of this property. That is something I think that's important when you look at the six-plex that's slated to be built behind the Eleventh Avenue homes that are already there. And even if a fire truck got in there, it could not easily get out when you take into consideration all of the cars that will be parked in there and the two ninety-degree turns. So what we had suggested to deal with access, traffic burden on Kenton Street would be to require Mr. Bell to have an ingress and egress also on Greenwood Alley. And to accomplish that, looking at the conceptual plan, he's going to raise the house there on the Eleventh Street side of Greenwood Alley on the project. He's purported or proposed to build another one, new house there that's forty-two by twenty-four. If that house is not built, then that easily could become the ingress egress onto Greenwood Alley, which would at least theoretically lessen the traffic burden on one-way street on Kenton. And also make it so that service vehicles would have access to the interior and have an exit point as well. Another question that I have that is not in the plan is where garbage dumpsters will be? If they're anywhere from fifty-six to ninety residents within this one acre property, this neighborhood has garbage collection that goes up Kenton and probably down Greenwood. I know that on my side, it goes up Kenton on Friday mornings. But with this density of development, where those dumpsters are placed, I certainly hope they're not all going to be over on the parking lot side where the fence is going. But I don't even see how a garbage truck is going to get in there to service this when there's one way in and no way out the other side. So does Mr. Bell know where he's going to be placing dumpsters to service this development?
As far as the park, and I'm gonna let Jay speak on that.
Mr. Caldwell, are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am. I think I tried to address it earlier, that our goal was to just provide two spots for each unit, which was more than what would have been required had we not done the PUD zoning. And so that was our reasoning behind that, and we committed to a little bit more, just so everybody was satisfied with that. And then as far as the dumpster and the fire protection, I'll speak to that while I'm on here. That is something that's required in the development plan review process, or the CDR now, I guess it is. So those will both be things that are addressed during that process. And when Ms. Kilgore did send that letter, I did check to make sure that a fire truck could get in there, and they would have to back out, but I did check the radiuses, and while it is tight, it does fit. So just wanted to address both of those things.
Mr. Caldwell, where's, answer Ms. Kilgore's question. Where are the dumpsters at on the site plan?
I did not show any dumpsters on the site plan. Looking at it right now, probably I'm gonna scoot spots one through six on my concept down a little bit and put it right there. The other spot would be next to spot forty-four. Same situation. I'd probably have to scoot the parking spots down just a little bit, but both those spots would be feasible.
So, and it's also fair, is it fair to say if the fire truck can get in there, a garbage truck can get in?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be something that was required. We wouldn't be able to get around that.
Sure, sure.
But for both types of those trucks, it would require those trucks to back back out of this and handle the two ninety-degree turns, correct, Mr. Caldwell?
Correct.
Okay, and talking about adjusting space number forty-four and spaces one through six, when I looked at the staff's markups on the concept plan, it looked to me as if parking space number one, is that indicating that it's going to have a tree in that vicinity or that parking space number one is going to be lost?
I would more than likely scoot the whole parking lot over closer to the proposed three-bedroom, seven-plex, to be able to gain that spot if that's where we decided to put it.
And the so on the marked-up plan, all parking places would remain, but they would probably move closer to the proposed three-bedroom?
Correct. And we would still be required to provide the two spaces per unit. So if that did end up becoming a struggle for us, we would just lose a unit. That's how we would handle that.
A dwelling unit out of the six-plex?
Correct, if we weren't able to provide parking.
Okay. Is there a requirement for thirty percent open space for this development? And if so, I don't really see open space in here. And that's not, that's not talking about the drainage basin, but I do have questions about the drainage basin. Is there the required open space? Is this, it looks like it's all buildings or asphalt?
Yeah, so the open space would just be their backyards and behind the units. Just depends on how you define open space is probably the conversation we're having.
The proposed drainage, did you do the engineering for that?
So at this point in the development, we have not done the engineering yet. That's a whole process that we go through with the city that we're required to show them how that we're not going to push more water off onto any neighbors. So we can only either keep the situation the same or make it better, and generally, we're trying to make it better.
Are you aware that currently there is significant runoff from Eleventh Street toward Tenth Street across these parking lots and these driveways that causes flooding on Tenth Street?
I did see your comment on that. Yes, ma'am.
And is that something that's likely to be a situation that's improved by Mr. Bell's proposed drainage?
If it's not improved, it's definitely not going to change, but our goal would obviously be to help the situation.
Is there any plan for the construction of curbs and sidewalks on the Kenton Street side of his development?
Not currently.
I would like to see, I would like to see the addition or the requirement as a condition for curbs and gutters on the Kenton Street side. This neighborhood, I've discovered, is a walking neighborhood with people with dogs and bicycles and families that are walking. A sidewalk on Kenton Street, and it would, it would be nice to have that continuous sidewalk along this development as it gets up toward Eleventh Street.
Ben, is that something that's required?
So when you're doing an infill development or infill redevelopment such as this, typically, we leave that up to the city public works at that point through that CDR process that was mentioned, or comprehensive development review process. And the reason is, is because if you're gonna put new sidewalks in an area, typically, it's part of an overall development plan, and I'm just unaware of any plans at this point by the city. We did not, we did not go over that with the city.
Okay.
Do I correctly understand that the plan allows Mr. Bell to determine which ways the houses on Kenton Street will face? And then it's possible that he could have the rear of each of these houses be on Kenton Street with bushes behind them?
I guess that would be allowed. Desmond, was that your intent? To face the rears?
No, my intent is to keep them how they are.
Would it be fair to say that you would take out the requirement about the trees and make sure that the façades are facing Kenton Street to address that concern?
I guess it's a possibility. But I do want to address where she was saying that she feels like the house that we're gonna build on Kenton should be as far as a space to come in. My whole purpose of wanting to build that house is to, for the house that was knocked down, is to build it back and even paint it the same color. It was green, as Akeisha showed you in the picture. So I'm trying to keep the, how the homes look. I mean, I'm gonna change some of the colors and put them in hardy board, but as far as turning the houses around, no, I mean, I never thought of that, really. I just wanted to keep them how they was, just rehab the homes.
And that's good, Desmond. I just was a little confused because the, the plan, the, it seemed to allow you to flip the front to the inside of the development. I think they look nice fronting on Kenton. I think that contributes to the overall residential nature of this area. And I think it's good if you would commit to leaving the fronts on Kenton Street.
I'm following the comment correctly, and Mr. Moore, you may have to back me up on this. If we look at Binding Element number nine, or Development Plan Condition, sorry, number nine, says the proposed buildings along Greenwood Alley will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Greenwood Alley or shall be screened with one evergreen tree for fifteen feet of side or rear facing Greenwood Alley. So in order, I believe, to address that, would we take out the "or shall be screened" and then with one evergreen tree and just have it simply say, "The proposed buildings," and maybe we should clarify, "Single-family structures" along Greenwood Alley and Kenton Street will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Greenwood Alley or Kenton Street.
I think that's the proper amendment, if that's something that Mr. Bell is willing to commit to.
Would we take out number eight if that were the case?
That's the way I heard it read. Is, Mr. Bell, is that something that you agree? I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't hear, I don't know if it was an internet connection. I didn't hear anything you said, Mr. Moore. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? I can. Okay, so what they're wanting to do is to amend Development Plan Conditions eight and nine to simply state that the proposed buildings, single-family buildings along Kenton Street and Greenwood Alley would face those two streets, and there would not be the right to flip them to the interior. Is that something you can agree to? Yes.
Thank you, thank you, the, that's, that's a good amendment, we appreciate that, that consideration. Um, a- and this may be something that's developed later in the planning process, but has the access to fire hydrants been um, investigated with regard to this increased density in, in residential development?
Uh, not yet, um, I do see just uh, looking here at my concept, there is one right across from the proposed three-bedroom house on Kenton Street. Um, and you're right, that would be something that the fire department um, would address if they felt like they needed more hydrants or the hydrants being moved. Um, or if they felt like the water pressure wasn't adequate to um, you know, make the neighborhood safe. They would address that and it's, it's a already requirement on our development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it, has, has there been consideration given to having um, ingress and egress added to Greenwood Alley to allow some traffic flow from both of these city streets into the development as well as people exiting onto Greenwood Alley?
Uh, there was, um, and Desmond uh, in his goal of development was wanting to keep as many single-family houses along the public streets um, to maintain that character. Um, and so that was why we did not um, put a entrance um, that connected to the main parking lot on Greenwood Alley.
Um, ha- it, has there been a decision made about where the allowed signage for this development is going to go? I'm assuming it's going to be somewhere on Kenton?
I don't know that a location has been designated, um, but the entrance sign standards are addressed um, on the design standards uh, letter E. Just as far as style and uh, size.
Um, I, I would, I would request that that signage not be placed near ten-twenty-four just out of confusion for people coming to visit there about the issue of adjoining um, neighbor parking. And i- it seems like it would be more helpful if the signage would be located up closer to the ingress egress point.
Desmond, you'll have to take that one, uh, if you're comfortable.
Are you saying that the, the si- um, you don't want the sign down by your area, correct?
Yes, I think it would be uh, confusing to people coming to the development that might make them more prone to think that they could park on the parking lot, the business parking lot side of the uh, fence to be constructed.
Okay, I, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I guess just, just to close, um, what, what we had as the property owners for nine fifteen East Tenth and me as the business occupant of that property um, had requested i- is that the density of this be decreased um, by lessening the number of units in these proposed apartment um, buildings? Um, I, I think there, there is a, a big difference between having four-plex two-bedroom units um, and four-plex three-bedroom units as opposed to these six-plexes. Um, a- and the overall concern has just been the density of, of, of the dwelling on this. You know, we're excited about the project. It's just that when you have that many new dwelling units built on one point one acres with one-way, one-street access, there's going to be a burden on Kenton Street.
May I speak to that, please? Give us your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Alexa Hatcher, my address is thirteen seventeen Scottsville Road and I'll tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so uh, I'm a professional working in an office building one block away from here. It's called uh, Higgins Center for Nonprofits. Um, and it's actually right directly across from the International Center as well. Um, and uh, first of all, I just wanna say Kenton Street has meant a lot to me personally um, over the years and I believe that it's a beautiful um, residential area that's important to Bowling Green. Um, and uh, I understand that um, what you're saying, Ms. Kilgore, is that um, there would be too many people living in one area. Um, and I just wanted to point out that um, the density um, of this particular area isn't higher than anywhere else on Kenton Street um, or anywhere in downtown Bowling Green for that matter. Um, and uh, I disagree with you that it would um, it would be too many people living in one area. Um, not to mention the importance of this area being a historic black neighborhood where folks have lived far before um, any nonprofit centers or chiropractor offices have ever been built. Um, and um, also, it doesn't take away whatsoever from my job and what I'm doing. Um, and if anything, it just makes it better uh, for more people to live there. Um, especially if, if there's twenty-two additional places for people to live. Um, that strengthens uh, Bowling Green i- in general, all of Bowling Green um, and especially the neighborhood um, and all of the businesses that are near there. Um, I understand that, that you, um, you all had, have just moved there in March, is that right? Yes, well, welcome to the area.
Thank you.
And uh, I'd just like to say that um, this area is, is really beautiful and it's been beautiful um, long before you or I got here and um, that, that this, this zoning change will only um, strengthen the, the area and it's not a burden um, to businesses or business professionals whatsoever.
Thank you, Ms. Hatcher.
Hi, Scott Kilgore, nine forty-one Fairway Street. Also hard cutie enterprise of the husband of Lana Kilgore and I promise to tell the truth. Uh, just again, we are solidly behind this. We appreciate Mr. Bell, we appreciate the, the work and also the front work he's done and letting us know what's going on. And I know, and just from what was shared before, this is hallowed ground. And uh, we're, we're grateful for its history, obviously. You know, being the new kids on my block, on the block here, my wife growing up in Bowling Green, I not having that privilege. But again, we just wanna affirm the work, we wanna affirm the vision. We just had some questions in regards to what is, um, you know, what is, you know, the density and what can be bo- borne by that one point one acre. So again, I hope you understand our hearts in this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions?
Well, well, I'll call for a motion.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Call for a motion. I make, I make the motion to approve the proposed.
I mean, somebody's still trying to speak.
Hello?
Ho- hello, Chair Runner, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, I just. I was um, thinking that I have the opportunity to um, to close um, as well as, as um, ask a couple of questions and I will be brief, but do I have that opportunity?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
I think we've heard.
I mean, we're ready to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay, I missed, I missed that, there was some interference.
Yeah, we.
We, we don't need more, we don't need more comments.
We had someone that was willing to make a motion, so we need to, to go ahead and do that and uh, I'll ask, ask for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number twenty twenty fifty-three ZBG. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and accident items presented at the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. The motion carries, our recommendation will be for approval and thank you all for, for being with us this evening. Commissioners, do you have anything else? Mr. Peterson?
No, I'll just mention that with the increasing uh, numbers of COVID cases so, and the new restrictions from, from Frankfurt and locally that we will not probably be having any, any face-to-face meetings anytime soon. The one we were kinda planning on has been, I guess, postponed and definitely until further notice. So uh, we'll just continue with the Zoom format until, till further notice, but that's all I have.
And anything else from commissioners? Nothing else, meeting's adjourned, again, thank you all for being with us.